Ready?
What's up, everybody? This is the poker coaching study session and today we are with Kelly. Kelly played the eighty-eight dollar long card. And the first place for seven thousand five hundred. Tell us a little bit more about the game, Kelly.
Uh, well, it's a game I I play all the time. I bought in three times. It's basically at a time period at night where it's actually pretty soupy action. I mean, I've I've done pretty well over the years in this particular game and um, I don't want to invite a lot of good players in, but uh, it is, it is, it is, it is a good tournament. It is a good.
I like uh, I like your adjective soupy.
Alright.
So you could definitely open jam this, but I like the men raise. I'm, I think uh, the men raises the way to go.
What kind of size do you guys like here?
Yeah, I I I don't like the over bet there.
I mean, I just go real small.
Yeah.
Yeah, I I kinda wanna catch value from his like draws that are just gonna call BS on us, you know?
Seems like a walk to limp pre flop.
Yeah, yeah, you could. I guess you could do that.
And.
Well, I don't have, I don't have a limping strategy in my game, so.
Yeah.
A quick question. How did, how did you, how was the first hand? We're looking at a ten big blind hand instead of more?
The third.
Okay, so you bought in super late.
Yeah, this is probably like near late, the end of late reg.
Okay.
Like final two, three levels.
I do that. I do that a lot, just because. Yeah, I do. Yeah, I do that a lot. I, I just don't have uh, sometimes I don't have the time.
Especially with these tournaments that last forever. I kinda like a jam here, Kelly. I think this hand's just good enough. Let's.
I'm also jamming here.
Yeah, me too.
I like the jam.
Um, I like a flat if we're deeper, but sub twenty, I think I'm just.
I would just call now. If he's gonna dock, let him dock and screw.
I think this is okay. Give him the clicker. I mean, he's committed now. You could call, but yeah, this is alright. He, I don't see, he actually does find a fold. He must have had like king jack or something.
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe like pocket eights, pocket nines.
I'm trying to think. I can't, I can't think of what I was thinking of when I flat called that, but I typically, I would typically jam that for sure. I have a little uh, problem in my game. I will tell you that uh, when the guy opens and uh, you know, from under the gun, I tend to be a little over conservative with that, I think.
You clam it up a little bit? Yeah, I don't think that's bad. I don't think it's bad.
Okay, so it's the other one.
Specifically ace queen offsuit when you're much deeper is the, is the most common calling hand in that top section.
Exactly.
But not a, but not a fifteen big.
Right.
What was that jam pre flop here, Kelly?
Excuse me?
It's always a jam on, on the.
Right, I've already reviewed this, right? I agree, I agree. I, yeah. If I was like uh, twenty-two big blinds, I think I can call there. Like over twenty big blinds, I think I could call there.
I would shove twenty.
Only an eighty.
Hmm, what about?
I like calling here.
Yeah.
Um, maybe king ten, and if it was like a little later position, but I think like this guy under the gun. Um, queen's probably not really great, right? We're kind of unblocking the floor of the stuff we won't folds from.
What do you do with king jack suited here?
I like it. I like it. I like a jam with king jack, I think.
I would call that as well.
I think I call both.
Or both jack then suited.
Cool. I just call.
I think like a lot of those are probably gonna be heavier calls from like under the gun. Like if we're talking like hijack or cutoff, they probably become much higher frequency jams.
In poker coaching charts, it's a hundred percent call.
Yeah, it seems right. I may be overplaying some of these. It does jam king jack, but it does call the others.
The suited jacks.
All your, all your ten suiteds are calls in that spot.
Okay.
Hey Louis, can you just open from hijack and see uh, how we respond versus hijack? Please?
You want to see the same spot against hijack?
Yep.
He has so polite, he has so politely, Louis. You can't say no.
It's worth noting. Can you look at these pre flop accounts? We're probably around fifty percent of the field and that's gonna change the ranges, right?
So suited tens are still called?
No, uh, I mean, if uh, U T G fault hijack open and we sit in the cutoff.
Take a peek. I'll take a peek and I don't know if it's gonna change it that much. Twenty-five effective.
Okay, thanks, set spots, I guess.
Playing more.
Right, as both, as both positions kind of converge towards the button, you're just gonna be jamming your suited Broadway more.
Okay, a side or short.
I would just let it go, man. You can't, you're digging a bit deep. If we're calling those. So. To answer your question, Ken, uh, the ranges are pretty similar. Seems like we like to jam king jack suited a bit more at fifty percent. Whatever.
And that king three from the big blind there, would that be an open jam?
It was from the bottom.
That's why I meant.
I think I, I don't think I wanna, I, I think on that last one, I don't think that's a, I don't think you wanna four bet that.
I would definitely be.
Did I get that wrong?
A jam.
Oh, it was a jam. Never mind.
Yeah. I would definitely be getting that in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, this must be my third re-bye here, cuz I lost that one, right? The four sevens.
Uh, I'm not sure. I didn't see.
Yeah, but he, he was under, he, he uh, you had him covered.
Everything's okay, guys.
Oh, I had it covered. Okay.
Yeah.
So.
Okay, I don't, I don't.
Yeah, yeah, this is a bit spicy, I think.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess it's okay. It's okay to complete, I guess. It's just this guy under the gun is, I mean, this is alright, I guess. I just don't know if I would wanna play aggressively into under the gun here.
Well, he's all in.
Well, the other guy isn't.
No, I think it's fine. It's a pair board. We have top there. We're supposed to check raise a lot.
Galen, you were talking pre flop, right?
Yeah.
Well, I'm talking this rate.
Yeah.
I think it's okay pre flop, but here playing aggressively into the guy. I mean, it may be okay.
What are you gonna do here? You mean you're not checking raising?
Big pack and call off?
I think this is a pure check raise.
Keep raising here.
This is a pure check raise. I checked this. If you go check it, it, it's a pure check raise, I think.
So it's just kind of a unique situation because he's gonna be forced to show this hand down often, so it's like, I don't know. I guess I just give people more credit for honesty in those situations.
I don't think you're following the action well, man. You have seventeen big blind, you have top pair.
Alright, here, I'll, I'll walk you through it, Louis. If he's forced to show his cards down, there's one guy all in. So when a guy's all in, that means they both have to show their cards down, right?
SPR is two, we have top pair.
Yeah, so what I was commenting on was.
We're on the big line. Does it get any clearer of a check raising this? For me? I mean, it's.
Well, and a heads up, what I'm, what I was saying was in a heads up pot where there's not a guy having to show his cards down, yes, I think it's fine.
And now I think that because there's a two big blind, it would make a difference.
Don't I need some protection here? I mean.
I was, I was just saying it's a consideration. I mean, it's, it's obviously fine. There's nothing much you can do about it and GTA wizard's not gonna have a spot to account for this.
Yeah, that's true. I forgot about the all-in. You're right.
That's all, it's all I was trying to point out, like.
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
It's fine.
Yeah, top, I mean, top, top. They're like sub fifteen, check raising is good, or I mean, top pairs is fine, right?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, that's probably fine, right?
What else are you gonna do?
I mean, it's under the gun. You might fold at ten.
A ten, eight.
Maybe.
No, I'm hijacked there.
Like under the gun versus hijack?
No, no, he's not under, with the ace ten. Oh, you mean with my ace queen?
No, no, no.
This one. Hey, if any chaves, jack, and you call days ten, eight.
Oh, he's under the gun. I got you. He's under the gun. Yeah.
So it looks like it's the floor.
Oh, yeah.
And it's like, it's very marginal.
Yeah.
You're gonna beat the ten?
You mean the call? I, I forgot I called off there. Yeah, I said.
Fifty, fifty. I think it's good enough. Eight big blinds, it's enough. All in?
Yeah, that's good, innit? Okay.
Hold.
Okay.
So we're in the money. So we're in the money now, by the way, so.
Alright, yeah. Get it in, win some flips. This is a good spot. Any, I like he, he lived up to his name. Any two wild.
Good one.
Uh, this is good, too. So that was pretty fortunate couple of hands there.
Yeah.
I would call this, this with the suited one.
How do you lose that?
I lost, I lose a lot of them in the last six months. I win some here, though.
When you flop the two queens, you're, you're expecting to win that.
Just call?
I would, this is a call, I think, at twenty-five effective.
It is.
So like Kelly, if you three bet this and the guy four bet jams you, how are you, what are you gonna do? Are you gonna call it off?
I gotta fold.
Right, so you're kind of torching that, that equity.
Yeah.
By doing that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a golf pre flop.
Yeah, I agree.
The way I was offsuit. It's just like the SPR.
Suit a different story.
Yeah, well, the offsuit one would be more attractive, I think, although having the eight's not great. She should be targeting a lot of them.
What's your bluffing range of this tag that?
I mean, you could probably take like some ace five, maybe some ace eight off, stuff like that.
The poker coaching ranges on this are half and, are ace two, ace three, ace four mix.
Oh, it's just.
And everything else is a call.
So it doesn't actually have an, a not all in sizing here.
That's what I thought. We're too short to three bet bluff.
So the um, the pre flop academy ranges actually do split.
I've been kinda working with that. I've been trying, I've been, I've been getting, I've been getting small three bet and I, and I've, I've been getting bet, three bet small a lot. I think it's a thing now, and I've been trying it out with my game. I've been trying to squeeze it into my game because I uh, I've seen how effective it is on me, so it, I don't like it.
The pre flop academy ranges are using ace nine off and ace ten off. They're not really using ace eight or ace five off.
And I think this guy had like zero four bets, like he had a very.
Yeah, yeah, Louis, I understand that they didn't use that as an input.
Yeah, poker coaching does the same thing to me. Ace nine, um, three bets, half, ace ten, twenty percent.
What do you do here at this SPR when you two bet? You're kind of forced to, to see that?
Yeah, yeah, I think you bet small here.
Okay, so you do that and then you don't see that.
Yeah, I know. I agree.
Up on the counter?
I delayed. It was a delay steal, delayed steal.
Well.
Now I'm gonna give up. Now I'm giving up.
Why would you, so, why would you give up here when you have like, I don't know?
I know he's got a medium pair and he's not gonna fold.
Alright, well, so check it out. Let me just walk through this real quick. Alright, so you're unblocking diamonds, good. You're unblocking hearts, good. You have an eight which blocks the nuts, good.
Yeah.
You have an ace, which isn't great because you can show that down and win often. But I don't know, man. I kinda like jamming here.
Yeah, I thought about it. I, I, I have to, I have to tell you that I just, at this point in time, uh, my gut was telling me he was, he was gonna call with a medium pair. I, I just thought he was gonna call it off.
Well, honestly, Kelly, if you're making adaptations for that, like in game, I think that's good. Um, just like while we have our theory caps on, I think recognizing the merit of this hand and the properties and what it would do in like GTA wizards important.
Yeah, I agree.
So on the flop, he really wants to bet as well.
Yes, small makes sense.
The turn, like the turn, he wants to bet smaller than.
Yeah, I was gonna say, that was my one critique. I probably would have bet smaller than you actually bet on the turn. Why'd you bet like five or something?
Yeah, I bet five.
And like, see, he had a really good hand to actually target for folds there.
Yeah, I know he did.
You can. I like folding here, maybe.
He had a pocket six.
Too shallow.
This is, this is probably okay as a call. It's gonna be close. Yeah, I mean, it's, it's right there. Like if you're on the button, it becomes like a full frequency thing, right?
What did GTA wizard do on the ace eight on the river within the line?
It was like a um, eighty percent jam, Scotty.
Okay, so it was a jam. Um, and if it was king, it probably would have been a hundred percent jam?
Um, I'm not sure. I didn't see.
Okay.
Cause the ace. Yeah, I would think like having the kings better than the ace.
Yeah.
Um. So we didn't get check raised on the flop by like his aces, right? I would probably go smaller than ten.
Yeah, 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 definitely. Wants to go three here.
You kinda got like the nuts right here. Like you want his queens to call you, I think.
You wanna go third. How much do you go? Oh, very close. Uh, that's five.
I would probably go five in game if I was.
What did I bet? What did I bet? I can't see from that.
Um, you've got seven, oh, it's five. Okay, there.
Okay, I bet five. Okay.
I like, I like that bet. I probably would have done that, too. This is good. Calling here is good.
Definitely, right? An ace queen suited as well?
Yep, ace queen suited, and it probably even calls like ace king suited sometimes. I wouldn't be surprised.
King.
It's gonna be raising mostly ace king, but I wouldn't be surprised to see frequencies of it. Nope, just ace queen.
It's cleaning.
You can see the offsuit one. It's actually, it's calling some of the offsuit ones.
But even raises ace queen and ace jack there, it said, right?
Yeah.
Are we openly?
I'm not raising ace jack there, I will tell you that.
I'm gonna Brett raid.
Offsuit, you definitely can.
I know, but I, I probably folding, to be honest with you.
You?
In a lot of spots, I am.
Honestly, Kelly, the equity of that hand's very paper thin. Some charts fold this when you get a little bit deeper.
Zero.
Point oh one.
Wow, I thought, I thought I was printing.
Printing pennies. I like the check here.
Is it the check?
I think it is.
Okay, let's see, let's see. Yeah, it is a check.
Does that have to do with his range? Cuz he's never gonna have fours there, except for pocket fours maybe, but.
I think it's uh, we just have to be cautious here. He's gonna be checking a lot of his range. He's not uncapped. And I mean, at the end of the day, you kinda wanna preserve your equity, right? We have backdoor flush, we have two overs, we have a lot of stuff going on here that we can just get pushed off of if we over aggressive here.
Would you rather bet this one or ace five of hearts?
Uh, I don't know if we have a lot of ace five of hearts here. I would, I would rather best, how about this ace jack of diamonds? I would rather bet.
Hmm.
Wanna bet ace five of heart more than.
Yeah, yeah, it does.
Then diamonds, not so much.
Yeah, not so much.
What do you do at the pairs here? Like sevens and uh, eight?
That's small. With the, my guess, with the card of the suit, it's best small.
The ones that interact.
It's not really using the spencer. So with one card of the suit, you actually don't mind turn, so you check back a bit more.
And if you have, if you have one card of each suit is when you check back the most.
Yes, I, I think, what do we call that? Is that the keppel effect? When you got one of each suit? Or is that for something else?
I don't think he's here to represent, so I don't know.
It's when it's a double flush board.
I would still, I would still play check here. This is probably fine. A delayed staff. I don't think it's bad.
Yeah, it's one wants to check down.
But it's even, it does it, it's even small.
Uh, you probably complete here.
I could tell you just in the quick analyze, HRC hates this. I didn't run it out, but it's losing a shit ton in just the simple, quick version.
Which one are you talking about, Ken?
Nine eight.
This one.
Just fold this, Ken?
Well, I mean, I didn't run it all the way out. I just did the quick analyze and this is losing uh, six point three six.
Three, three ways, you mean?
There's, I feel like these ranges are wide enough where this is fine, but maybe I'm wrong.
At Chippy V would like to complete.
Oh, yeah. Dude, at Chippy V, I'm looking at Chippy V ranges. It's like not even close. It's, it's calling like one gappers and some two gappers.
Instead of HRC with, with payouts and then ICM a little bit, we wanna start to fold.
Well, yeah, and we're also probably have some bit of ICM now. If he's on his third bullet and late reg to third bullet, so we can even be at a late reg now.
I'm in the money. I'm in the money now.
Oh, you're in the money.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm absolutely in the money.
Money, yeah. Here, I'll, I'll look at ten percent of the field and see what it wants to do. I mean, it's still calling this at ten percent of the field after the money bubble.
Said, are you okay?
No, I am six there.
Get, get well.
Thank you, thank you.
So. Alright, so PFA, who's doing the PFA?
Well, I'm looking, I'm looking at it, man. It's fine. Honestly, at ten percent of the field, it's still calling this combo.
It's still calling, so what? Interesting that it's in the potatoes?
I'm gonna, actually, I'm gonna put um, like thirty percent of the field left, cuz that's probably where we are. I'm guessing there's a hundred left, so like twenty, uh, twenty percent of the field.
But Ken, he said we're in the money, man. So if you're in the money, that means it has to be less than eleven percent of the field.
Oh, we're in the money, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So let's change it.
Okay, so not a big deal because nothing happens. There's no nine, no eight.
Nothing exciting, right? Alright, open this. Good. I'm folding this.
Me too.
That's the most suspicious looking like committee rate.
Well, this, I had this guy, I mean, this guy was uh, he was very aggressive, but he was always had stuff, you know? I mean, he was, I think he had some pretty good cards, too. He had a monster stack when we started. Remember, I beat him out of that ace king, ace jack hand. That's where I got his chips.
Ah, I got it.
But you open two, two, he makes it like, it's gonna be a
He's jamming twelve effective.
Nine hand.
Yeah, well, it's.
What do you call the nine big blind here with?
Nothing. You, it's twelve. You have to look at twelve. He's committing himself.
I think king queens my cutoff here. I mean, I'm calling king queen probably.
I'm not, I'm not even calling king queen.
I probably shouldn't. I probably shouldn't, but I think it's, I think it's uh, making money mathematically.
It's suited an easy call?
Ken, suited, I would call suited.
Yeah, suited, I think you call.
And can you see this king jack if it's good?
I don't like the king jack. I think it's a pure call, a bit pure.
Guy, you're crazies if you're calling.
I mean, I can, I have them all in here. I can.
First.
This guy was on the niddier side, by the way, too. Just, I mean, I'm not saying, he wasn't a net. He was not a net, for sure. Uh, but he was, but he had hands. I mean, he was not, he wasn't screwing around in there.
Yeah, I, I honestly, I'm folding king queen off here and like.
I'm putting the bottom of his suited, I'm putting the bottom of his range around ace ten here.
Yeah, I'm folding, I'm probably folding ace ten off. I am folding ace ten off here. Ace jack off is hard.
Yeah. I agree.
Are you really thinking about calling this off, Louis?
I would call ace, I think the floor is ace nine, so I'm calling ace ten out.
Yikes.
I think he's. Honestly, I think this one is a lot closer than you guys think. I think king queen is a call.
I'm looking, alright, so here, check it out. I'm looking at ten percent of the field. Fifteen hijack versus a three bet all in from the button, and you're like two pips off.
Yeah, but fifteen is a, I, I wouldn't call fifteen, but this here feels like it's ten big blind and I, my impression, nine big blind, we can call king jack, ten big blind, we can call king queen, but you're looking at fifteen, so it's like you are too big, I'm more so sure it's not gonna be in there, but.
Well, you can't really call it like ten.
But I, I, I thought Ken had it and it's HRC and made a quick analyze and then could give me a quick answer, but.
It's.
Oh, right?
Uh, maybe my mic's not working, I answer.
Vivian, that's good math, good math, twelve.
Can we be a little bit cautious of his three bet sizing too with like the four point two five x?
This is like, please call me.
Yeah, with the three, leaving the three bu, big, bigs behind. It just seems uh,
Oh, I thought he was.
Kinda strong.
So what does it take? The three bigs behind, just in case Shane shoves and we, and we call, then he folds and moves up one, one uh.
Oh, we're not at the final table here. This is not the final table.
Okay.
Okay, so I guess we're gonna move on.
Do you want me to put it in HRC real quick?
I would fold this one.
I think this is an easy fold. I think king queen is the question.
I would love to see a calling range here because it's not, I think it's pretty close here.
Louis is feeling attacked right now.
I don't, I just wanna see a solution.
Alright, I'll, I'll put, I'll throw something together for us. Let me just quickly like grab the chips. Oh, wait, I mean, we are, it needs to be like ICM adjusted and stuff. I don't have like a good preset thing for this.
If this is EV and I've got fifty big blinds, I'm folding this anyway.
I guess I could do multi-table ICM. So how many payouts did I put in here?
Louis, you asked. But.
So under the, under the gun, we've got seven, so we gotta delete one. So thirty-one.
Will you grab the screen?
Thirty-nine. Yeah, sure, I'll grab the screen real quick. Uh, can you see HRC beta? Can you guys see this? Okay?
Is my mic working now?
Yeah, it is working, Ken. Uh, did you put this in? Did you already start running this?
Starting to run, yeah.
Alright, just look at Ken's cuz like my, I don't have a, a good payout template.
Okay, sure.
Let me see the uh, let me see the hand first. I, I have it running, cuz I know what hand it was, but I didn't see the action, so I just wanna set it up. So it was um, button call for hijack, under the gun, open.
Yeah, it's eleven point six six effective.
Hijack open.
Hijack opens.
Button jams.
Button call of hijack, alright.
Just make him jam, so.
Let me um.
I mean, I'm putting.
Let me show the screen.
I need to create a good like multi-table ICM template for HRC. Or get the one that we made for Ken, or the one that Ken made.
So we're hijack. I'll just run this for a second, clean a little bit up and then I'll do a sub tree.
A wizard, I have ICM last twenty-five percent with uh, hijack raising two and button goal, going all in basically with fourteen. And it's showing like bottom rearranged like ace ten suited, ace ten off, and then pocket six is up and king queen suited.
Yeah, I like that range. I like that.
Yeah, the only problem with that range is twenty percent of the field or whatever you said, i- it's not in the money yet, so like.
Okay, oh, yeah, I went to, it's, I did ICM last twenty-five percent.
Yeah, it needs to be like ten percent, needs to be ten percent or less.
Okay.
Maybe like. What we're looking at.
Three tables.
That would probably be more representative.
What we're looking at right now is the hijack's opening range, is that right?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's in here, right?
That's just a raise.
Uh, what happened?
You're just looking at is like RFI range.
Raise, and then we wanna see the all-in range for the, the button. And then we wanna see our call against the all-in.
We're not calling if he's not jamming this. Or button, right?
We're hijacked.
Hijack.
Okay, so as I thought, king queen is in there, king queen offsuit, and then.
Yeah, I, I said I would call king queen, but.
And, and then if you remove one big blind from his stack, like he's twelve right now, if you make it eleven, he's shoving nine, then king jack off becomes a call. That's why I said it's extremely close here.
We don't know that.
You don't, but that's what I'm saying. You don't, but that's what I'm saying. That's what I think the strategy is.
That's okay, that's, that's good. That's what you, that's fine. What are the, what are the payouts uh that you're using?
I can change it. I'm gonna change it. Um, button.
You're using.
Right?
A button.
I gave him the payouts. I haven't saved.
Remove one big blind here.
So go. Seven, so seventy-five hundred.
That's seventy-five thousand.
Same difference.
Oh, okay.
I think I made the right adjustment.
Okay.
I think, I, I don't know if you did or not. I went.
Looked like the right, just kinda like, we'll see here. So yeah, now he's got 10 bigs, it's a 10 instead of 11.
Mm-hmm.
So from what I understood, everyone was full, snap folding King Queen off in this, in this spot.
No, I was calling King Queen. I said King Jack.
King Queen off that spot. I said I was folding.
Yeah, I'm, I, I don't think I would have. I think I would call King Queen.
So just making sure, because I think it's a lot closer than, cause everyone has the black and white answer when you first saw the hand. I was like, eh.
So what is uh 10% of aces also? For like the actual simulation?
Well, first, let's see if what I think.
He can do both, right? He can just run the sub tree.
It speeds it up. I mean, it's not like, it's like I like to have it, but it's good enough. So hijack opens, button jams.
Okay, and we're not calling King Jack. Alright.
I got it. I got a question. What is, is that? It's a three bet, right? Like he raised it to eight, but if he just call and if he don't flop, anything, and there is ace, so he just falls safe for big blind?
I, I'm sorry, I didn't quite understand the question.
No, you can't, you can't fold after you call the, after you call the uh eight.
Oh, yeah, no, no, no.
If you call the eight, you're calling the four. It's effectively 11.66 is what it is.
Cool, alright, hey, thanks a lot Ken. I think we have.
So LP, by the way, I mean, we took one big blind off, he still has 11.
Yeah, I know.
Hey, uh, question.
Twelve, now he has eleven.
Did you want?
What is uh, what's the EV of that King Queen off compared to aces?
Uh, it's probably far, right? Uh.
So 0.37, yeah.
Five percent.
And I, I also thought the floor was ace nine off, so I'm calling ace 10 up. So he's still. Close to 10% of aces. Alright, let's move on.
Yep.
So yeah, King Queen here is a call, King Jack is a fold.
And King Queen is not a great call, right?
Assuming, uh, yeah, assuming the guy's jamming GTO ranges and not knit.
Yeah, this guy was on the nittier side too.
Well, then, yeah, simple.
Anyone isoling here?
You know, I don't, I don't hate this verse a uh, versus limp Kelly, to be honest. I don't hate it at all, like. I feel like at 23, 24, that the Brett show should be pretty aggressive versus you.
I'm surprised because we're suited, so I've never won.
Yeah, I mean. They're, they're typically not gonna raise, right? Like some of the high-low trashy ones do, I think, but.
I would never raise her.
Poker coaching is 21%.
Right. Um, this is a good C bet. And. I like, uh, this is probably close, right? I think I do like jamming this though. I don't know, what do you think?
Well, it's one of those hands that I can't call off with, right? And I, or I don't wanna call off.
Yeah. I don't like 2.5. I feel like you're just gonna get torched if you raise 2.5 here.
Yeah.
I was thinking calling could be competitive. Uh, this is a good call. Uh. Do you ever take a stab here? I don't think so.
Check, check on the flop, this turn, flush completing, kind of lowest cards?
Yeah, I mean, you probably could.
I'm tempted.
I, I'm, I'm kinda with you, like, that's what was going through my mind.
What do we have? Queen, Jack of hearts?
Uh, we do not have a heart. We got Queen, Jack. Speed diamond. It's towards the bottom there.
So eight, three off is actually mostly raising. I mean, eight, three suited.
And the question was. Do we bet?
When that? To what?
We don't really bet this time.
Okay. He was saying, yeah, he's talking about this hand Ken. You're, you're talking about the eight, three from the other hand. It does raise since a lot of these other charts.
The eight, three suited?
Seventy-five, seventy-five percent raise.
I've got it as 20, I've got a 20 part, 20%, 21% raise.
This is HRC.
Hey, I was curious, with the K nine, are we ever attacking him there? Probably not. We don't jam, we don't jam here.
King is paid and who knows?
Yeah, I was kinda more curious about like pre-flop, if we ever play this aggressively. I don't think we do though. It's too good, right?
He's short.
He is short. So we would use the suited combos if we're gonna push equity versus that guy. Yeah, this isn't a jam, it's just a call.
I wouldn't use the suited combos or. Am I wrong?
It is gonna, it is gonna jam some suited combos, maybe not King nine, but like.
It's like a short stack opens almost three big blinds, man. I, I'm not there with King nine.
So it is pulling from the nine, so Jack nine, 10, nine, a little bit, nine, eight.
So this looks like a punt calling.
Well, it looks like a punt caller.
Might not be a call. Flap.
What, King nine off?
What are you gonna do here?
See the position, see, I'm trying to catch up. It's really favorable if I had these ahead of time to run them. I just, in the quick, in the quick analyzer, it's losing chips, but then you gotta run it. So it's like, it's a red flag and then you gotta run it to check.
I would be highly suspicious if you're ever folding this pre-flop.
What about the fact that he raised 2.7 and not to, not to two?
Well, yeah, I mean.
You can remove a couple of bits if you want, but still, it's gonna take a while for you.
Yeah, where is my, that's, that's one of my uh, uh, questions is uh, when they're, you know, this guy's raising 2.69, right? So uh, where is the break off of where you would call your kings? You're all suit kings there.
Well, look at the, look at the chart. You see, look what Jack six is doing, okay? You see Jack six is starting to fold. That kinda lets you know like the floor of the range. There's like an equity clip there, so like it would probably send it towards like King five or something.
Yeah, I think you're folding King five there actually. I'm folding King five, probably King seven or King eight, I'm calling maybe. I even like, I don't even like King eight actually too well.
We actually made a 20 minute video about uh the difference between two eights, 2.5, 2.2.
Okay.
Art, so you can have it.
Thanks.
Lara's WPT prime final table Las Vegas.
Louie.
Oh, by the way, this pro player, this pro player, I had, he's, he's a real passive donkey type. I mean, I, I shouldn't say donkey, but. He is, but anyway, I mean, he was a real, he's, he's real passive.
Got it.
Louis, can you give us a 90 second synopsis of what, of that, that 20 minute video?
I'll, I'll pick a minute screen real quick.
Uh, basically. It goes like, uh, it depends on, on the size, but you remove basically one or two pip. Of the box. So what is this, King nine?
Yep. 2.7 open, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's about right. Okay, well, it's.
I'm ready, King eight.
Oh, very.
This is uh, this is way tighter than I would have expected.
Well, I'm playing it, just to give you a game feel, I'm playing as many pots as I can against this guy.
I gotcha. And it's because the guy is wider and kinda slash.
He's just loose passive, loose passive. When he, of course, of course, when he raises big like that, he may be. Telegraphing, he's got a big hand too, you know, cause he's like playing with his cards face up usually.
Got it.
So maybe I need to fold more there, I don't know. I mean, I do need to fold more, more in theory. I agree with that, but.
If you can outplay the guy post-flopping, he, like you said, he plays pretty face up and transparent post-flop is probably fine, but this is, this is honestly pretty surprising.
Yeah, I, I don't think I'm folding, well, to a men bet, you're never folding King nine there, right? King nine to a men bet.
Uh, nope. And this is with the ICM payments that you have, Ken?
Yeah, I, I forget how many it says was left. There's 50-ish left, 40 something.
That's probably a good guess.
Well, this automatically figures it out. It's pretty cool. And you upload the whole hand history and you put the right chip number in. It like, it could kinda figure out how many are left within a couple players.
That is pretty cool.
Alright, well.
Did the, did the chart that we looked at earlier that had all the offsuit kings, that had the offsuit kings calling, did that have all the same payout structure? It, was the only difference that that was for two big blinds or was it also different assumptions?
I think it's just Chippy V, um.
Okay, so that.
Whatever, it's, it's whatever GTO wizard spit out from when you put the hand in. It doesn't know the payouts and stuff.
I don't like the limp here, Ken.
I guess we.
Well, I don't, I don't like it either. I don't like it either actually, but I, again, that player. You know? I think I could double up through him pretty easy. I don't know what I'm, I think I can outplay him, but I can't outplay him with that many, that with that.
You think you're now playing out of position with a nine, five offsuit? And two players?
No, I don't. I think it was a bad call, but, but it's a half a big blind, so it's not the end of the world.
What about this one?
I'm okay with this. I would probably do this a lot. High-low suited queen, it's probably fine at 10.
I'm trying to mention that um, I, I'm having a hard time watching and running, so uh, it looks like we missed a hand. There was a Queen, Jack, oh, handy play before the K nine hand. It looks like it was a pretty big error as well.
Oh yeah, I don't even remember Queen nine.
It was. Queen Jack off. It was a few hands before the uh, K nine.
Yeah, well.
I remember that hand. I think he shoved, he was a small blind, big blind. I think he shoved Queen Jack off.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, shoved the queen. Yeah, yeah, shoved the Queen Jack off, 14 big blinds, that's right.
That's wrong.
Yeah, blind v blind. I was kinda looking at that in solutions. I think that was the correct move. Shoving.
I can run it now that I know with the situation, Roz, but it's, it's flagged in here, so I gotta run it to look.
It was mixing all three options and like call, raise or go on.
I think it was calling like 60% and then 40% split between the others.
Yeah.
But jamming was definitely one of the minority, uh, was definitely one of the options that it was liking. If he jams, we gotta call. Good river. Oh, you didn't even need it.
I needed it. I didn't need it to be that Jack.
Oh, look at this river, look at this river.
How often do you check here?
I think as you get deeper in tournaments, it's probably fine.
Is it?
I think.
It's marginally made.
So then I board against a big blind.
It is.
Okay, okay.
Are you betting a 10 high board against a big blind?
Plenty of checking here. Is he calling?
Definitely calling. Uh, so this is an interesting spot. Um.
I'm trying to figure out how, how to get called here, right? How much I can get called here? What can this guy have? What am I getting paid with?
He can have an eight, uh, he can have a straight, he can have a. A ten and nine.
My problem is like.
I don't think he's got his ten.
Right, well, does he ever go big on the turn and then play check on the river with value? It seems like such an odd line.
Yeah, I think he was taking a stab at this. That's why I didn't know what sizing to.
I think there's two good options. I think like something that's definitely gonna get called or something targeting his bluff catchers. So like. All in or like five or six?
Yeah, I mean, the nine does change the board dynamic quite a bit, so he might, yeah, he's gonna check a lot of tens here, right?
And, and to be honest, you have so many bluffs here when you get to this river and that nine completes, like you should, you should just have infinite bluffs.
So I guess maybe pot size is better here with your bluffs and with, with your nuts, cause I don't think I wanna go all in with my blusher.
Yeah, probably not.
I was looking in, trying to find good combos, jam that have full equity. It's like King Jack, it's like a pretty good showdown king, right?
Yeah, he's also just so weak with this line, like the check, check, stab, turn, check river. It, he, this just doesn't have like the nuts in it. Except for pocket nines, which you have.
Okay, so let's see, let's see the, the, the river. Turn call is fine.
It wants to go like fat, so.
Yeah, okay.
All, okay, we were right. Look, so it does go all in some, but typically it kinda converges around this like 60 to pot size.
Yeah.
Seven into 12.
What did I bet? I don't remember. Yeah.
You, you, you'd win pot, this is good. But like we were kinda saying, he just doesn't have anything to really call with.
I don't think he had anything, to be honest with you.
Oh, this is, I think this is.
Disgusting.
The, if you're getting deep into a tournament and you're playing six-handed, so you should be getting pretty deep here. This is probably way closer.
First off, is this even a good three bet?
I don't think it is. I was gonna say that too. Like when we get super deep into a tournament, I would lean calling with these middling pairs to protect that range.
Got you.
Where's the two tens?
I'm looking for it.
This would be an interesting one to HRC. Honestly, I feel kinda lost here. Um, my instinct is like, we're doing very poorly here.
Yeah, this, and the stack sizes are a little strange too, right? Like he's only got 22 big blinds. I.
My, my question is Kelly, is he doing this with pocket nines here?
Yeah, no, probably not.
So it's like you're either dominated here or you're flipping.
Right, right.
At Chippy V, it's an easy spot, but.
It is, it is.
Should we even be three betting?
I'm with you.
Any jams, when just the world have heard here.
And honestly, like, I feel like it plays a lot better as a flat here and you can, I think it's gonna play much better as a bluff catcher protecting that range, like. If you were to flat here and the guy jams on you, I would be more likely to call.
Just easier, right? Because then you're super cap, you're projecting a cap range, whereas now it's you're projecting strength.
Well, yeah, this is, this just doesn't have bluffs in it as frequently as if you were to flat.
I agree.
But you call uh, the three bet jam from a big blind, small blind, then button more and cut off maybe.
If you flat this, absolutely, but if. When you present an uncapped range here and you three bet and somebody called four bets, um, we're, we're kind of toast if you're late into a tournament.
Right. I'm getting two to one, I'm getting two to one on my money for sure, uh, but I, I agree, I agree with the overall comments.
What does the machine say, Ken?
Uh, I didn't run this one. I would snap fold here.
I think this is a really good one to run. Like out of all the hands we've had presented, I think this one probably has the majority of people in murky waters.
How many have we got left?
It's gotta be final few tables, cause we're only six-handed, right Kelly?
Yeah, it's close. We're, 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 we're getting uh, yes.
Just run it as final two tables, so like.
Probably, it's probably 18 left, I would say.
Okay, that sounds good.
So if we are that uh, close to the final table, what's about a three bet jamming?
Seventeen remaining, it says. The machine's telling me seventeen, I'll run it at that. Um.
I don't know if you want my background on this, but, but uh, my thought process, here is my thought process, okay? So uh, for six months now, I've been finishing. 20th, 25th, uh, tons of tournaments. And uh, and, and, and I uh, I thought, I think in these spots, I've been playing way too passive. And I decided in this, in these, I saw Matt's ICM webinar, you know, where he discussed the entire tournament, ICM through the entire tournament. And I realized that I had changed my game because of all this ICM study. Where I used to be successful in winning a lot of tournaments. I'm now finished, not even getting to final table. This is the first final table I've had since March, okay? And I decided, I decided that I was going, yeah, the difference was. I was, I was calling too much. Wasn't three betting enough. And, and I was. And, and I was, and I was opening too much, so I was opening too much, calling too much and not three betting enough. So I decided I was going to open less, three bet more.
Got it.
And that, that was with my strategy and that's, and that's actually, that's why it wasn't this tournament. Now, this particular spot, I tend to agree. I, I think this was a close, I remember this spot actually. Thinking that I would be, thinking that I would be crazy, you know, crazy here. But, you know, but I'm getting two to one and I'm hoping for a race basically if you call this, right? I mean, you know.
Oh, yeah, you, you wanna see.
Dominated. I could easily be on, yeah, I could be dominated easily, jacks, queens, kings, aces, you know.
There's one other thought here that I just wondered, do we consider? When you said we're either dominated or we're flipping unless he, unless he's doing this with nines and nines are such a small part of that range that we can ignore it.
Yeah.
But when we're flipping. Is he missing one of his outs because of our usuals open?
It's well, so, yeah, like. I mean, that's a minor consideration, like if it was more like. Uh, I don't know, raise, call, call, raise, jam, something like that, it would be a greater consideration, right? But it's two cards really.
Okay.
Ken?
I'm a little confused. Uh, is there just a one big blind in this hand?
No.
No.
There's something's not, uh, no, maybe I got the wrong hand here.
It should be six handed.
Oh, the, the small blind's not in there.
Yeah, so one big blind, right?
Yeah. No small blind, that's right.
No small blind.
Button cut off, hi Jack, low Jack. I'm having, see, but yet it shows. Well, I don't know, uh, you look at it with me, I will go through it.
I don't know how consequential like the small blind being in or out of the pot is really gonna be.
Uh, just the way I'm looking at it, it's kind of got my head messed up, so let's go through, let me, um, I can share the screen.
Cool, yeah.
So we have, let's go, um. It was. This guy opens, right?
Yeah.
Uh, it was one of the earliest opens. Kelly, three bets right behind.
That guy has forty-two bigs. We have thirty and then it's the big blind of twenty-two, right?
Hi Jack.
Yep, that seems right.
Oh, the slow Jack.
I have, I use a smaller three bet size. I should have changed that, but it's not gonna matter much, I guess, right?
Uh, I don't think it's gonna matter too much because there's a four bet jam. Um.
Big blind, four bets, and now.
What range are we using as the four bet jam range for this?
Yeah, that's a good question, right?
Have no bluffs in it. I think, right, because I'm, I'm seeing some ace five suited there that I think we can discount.
Yeah, I don't remember this player at all, so, I mean, I think this is the only pot I played with this player in the whole tournament, maybe.
I mean, Scotty, the way I look at it is I run it a theory, see what it's supposed to be, and then we have to make adjustments off of what we think they're doing.
Right, so, so Scotty, the good way to think about this is if we look at that range and it's got bluffs in it. And the call is marginal or not a call, it becomes an obvious fold if there's no bluffs, if there's, if you don't think the guy has bluffs, right? Like, so if this guy in reality isn't viewing partial frequencies of ace five, ace four, pocket fours. Um, you know, these suited tens, then, um. If we're still folding in theory, it just becomes like a snap fold.
Yeah.
Yeah, the tighter he gets, the worse tens are.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
I mean, against, against this range, just visibly, if you take those bluffs out.
This is. You're kind of dominated, right? You're kind of dominated.
Yeah, he's just got. It's just the dominated versus the flip percentage is just terrible.
Can you please go back to the high check range, please?
Uh, which high check range?
This one with, um, yeah, great.
So, yeah, you can see the majority of responses calling here, even with like, even with jacks.
What is strange in my opinion is we have, uh, we haven't any, uh, gem in our range, so normally I thought. Like with the thirty big blinds around, we have a lot of jamming already.
Well, you do, but you're, you're not a, you're not, you're not adjusting to the late game, like late game ICM stuff, it becomes more of like. Throwing jabs than like these big haymaker, like you can often like these little raises will. Um, accomplish the same thing as jams do, just because people are kind of, they're not calling, you know, along pot odd lines. So an interesting experiment that to look at here would be like if you played call here. And the small blind jammed, then kind of look at what like tens would be doing.
Looks like we're at, I, I just went through this. Looks like we're probably at two tables here.
Okay.
Yeah.
So was it the big blind or was it the small blind? I don't remember. I don't see the small.
Uh, there is no small blind.
I really love.
That's right.
Response for bucket ten like calling makes a lot of sense to me.
Yeah, me too. Now, okay, so like, look at this, since now like tens, so check the EV of tens here.
Wow.
And we're, we're making like sixteen. We're making like sixteen point five dollars here, which, I mean, it's still pretty, uh, it's still pretty marginal, like. I just think, uh, villain's gonna have way more bluffs here now. As opposed to the other one where we present the uncapped range. So we're making like ten bucks there.
Yeah, I think folding to the jam is pretty good here. I think, uh, you know, looking back at this hand.
I'm curious if making him raise, uh, three exchanges, uh, so I'm gonna look at it that way too.
Yeah.
Cause that, and now we have an extra chip in the pot, so maybe we call, now we might have to call just a bit more.
Yeah, maybe. I don't know how consequential it's gonna be.
And with my stacks, and with my stack size there, I think my risk premium's pretty high there too.
You should be, right?
Yeah, I think so. I think so with my stack size there.
So I think the synopsis is, um, calling's probably preferable. If you do three bet, you should probably be three betting for a smaller size.
Right.
And if you three bet, face a four bet jam, you're, um. Yeah, i- it's gonna be marginal.
So I will say something, uh, I'm sorry, I will say something about this tournament though, as we go forward. Uh, this tournament plays pretty deep. I mean, uh, everybody had pretty good stack sizes in this tournament that was left. And so it, it, it does go into the night. It's a pretty deep tournament, so I don't, you know.
You say that Kelly, but it's been forty-three and where you have twenty big blinds.
Yeah, that's pretty good. For some, most of the tournaments that I play.
That's true. Well, so this was good. It worked out. It was a nice spot. Um, I like the call here.
I'm the chip leader now.
Don't we want to raise to put pressure on him? Now, in this stage of the tournament?
I think he has way less to lose than like maybe applying pressure to Shane or the other guy.
Yeah, now this guy is a, a great, a really good player.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Very good player.
I expected to be calling chippy V. I'm just wondering if ICM, if we're.
I am the chip leader now. I'm pretty sure I'm the chip leader at this point.
This is, uh, winning poker network.
At, at chippy V, it's never calling.
Yeah, so ICM, I think you're gonna keep applying even the pressure as well. Cause he's gonna try to, much, especially if he's a good player, he's still trying to chip up. He's still trying to get, play post flop and just go open fold, get some open folds and pick up blinds, right? Like, this guy's not calling here.
I think, I think, yeah, yeah, I think so, against this.
What are you doing Louis? What do you, do you like three betting this in the spot if it's final two tables?
Well, I think it's a three bet, no? Three bet call of the, the short stack? If it wasn't enough, I would be in the thick of it, but it's been stupid, I think it's good enough.
I feel like final two tables, when you're chip leader here, three betting that guy and then calling off is just punting.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm wrong.
He's pretty good.
In the quick analyzation, which is always a different, slightly different result, result anyway, it does prefer to call, it looks like.
Seems crazy to me.
I'll, I'll have to run it, but just when you do the quick analyze.
I would rather three bet ace queen offsuit and call with suited ace queen.
It's not a mistake to call, put it that way, for sure.
Okay. What about?
You wanted, you wanted to check raise all in, right?
Yeah, well, checking's fine here, obviously.
No, I would never check raise all in. I might check raise to five or six, something like that.
This is good. I think, uh, taking the delays stab is good. The turn probe. Okay. Uh, probably fine, right?
Yeah, now this guy, the Shane guy, we played together this whole tournament. He owned me this whole tournament. This guy just beat the crap out of me this tournament. Just telling you.
King of diamond, I guess we can bet, but ace sideboard and this scenario is not so good for us.
Well, I just don't necessarily, if we're final two tables or something and we have this many chips, I don't know if I want to be, uh.
Yeah, easy check.
Yeah, I don't want to be playing from the back foot against a guy who can apply a lot of pressure to me.
I was taking one stab and then gonna fold. That was my idea with the, with the king of diamonds.
It's probably fine, for sure Kelly. There's a lot of turns you can continue barreling. I don't know about calling this.
Are you gonna barrel if you hit a, if you hit a diamond on the turn?
You got to, yeah, yes. Uh, have a go in Dominic. Merry Christmas, man.
So, you guys like the defen of ICM here?
Hmm, I don't think I do. Maybe it's fine. I mean, it's, it's kind of whatever, right?
Ten eight goes alright, but ten seven.
It's like you're probably not making a huge mistake, but I, I just don't know.
He's so short.
I'd let him steal it.
I would let him steal it too.
We have a ten seven.
It's right there.
It's not, okay, so it's not mixing it chippy V.
Alright.
It's a mistake in ICM.
Yeah, I think so as well.
Just fold.
Yeah.
I see him like.
I don't think you leave here whatsoever.
Why not? It's the second, second card paired. This just seems good.
And I thought he had an ace and I thought he might have an ace. I'm gonna get paid here.
Yeah, but you're the big blind here. You don't, you don't say leave on one of ten pairs from the big one.
Yeah, but I don't know that, that's not true, I don't think. Maybe it is.
And chippy V, it's.
Eighth bearing, a seventh bearing, a six, a five, a four, sure, but ten. The ten is a key card for any position, yeah.
We have equal amounts of tens. It's not like he has an exclusive amount of tens.
Yeah, look at this. He wants to.
Technically, I don't think we're supposed to have this ten.
Fifty fifty on the turn, it's fine to bet.
That's a pretty, that's pretty high for a dog frequency.
Yeah.
But the ranges are way different guys. We really shouldn't look at it like this.
Sure. The, sure, the ranges are different, the, the driving factors are still the same though, right?
Yeah, bottom of rate, like if we don't have, like if we're not supposed to have ten, seven, then we're gonna be, I have a lot less tens. And, cause we're probably not gonna have ten, seven, ten, six, like stuff like, you're in there calling that stuff, you're not, it's not in your range anymore. Range.
So do you, do you, what do you think? Who has more tens, Ken? Do you think he's opening more tens or you think we have more tens that we're calling with?
Uh. I mean.
Or are they similar?
I think they're similar, actually.
Okay, so yeah, I mean, that, that would still make the driving factor behind. How many tens do you think he's betting on the flop as opposed to us calling?
Well, I think he's she betting the flap every time.
Probably, probably the majority of it, right? Yeah, so this, this is why you don't the turn here.
And he called us with eight, with an ace, I assume?
Uh, he did. He had a seven, so he just got cooler to have his pants there.
I think that's a good raise.
Uh, high low, high low offsuit combos is definitely pretty good here, I think.
We're very deep though.
I think in the small blind, you want to raise, you got the chip lead, I think you want to open raise every combination you have to put maximum pressure.
This guy's second in chips, okay?
I don't know, I would keep looking.
So I'm the chip leader, he's second at chips.
I would agree with, uh, I would agree with you guys that taking aggressive actions versus this guy to apply pressure is probably gonna be good. But he seems pretty sticky, like this guy does not mind playing pots apparently.
He doesn't.
Oh man, this is, this is making me nervous.
Uh, I'm getting sick too.
Let's give, yeah, we're, it's over.
I'm getting sick again.
Uh, I think this is okay. He's just not buying what you're selling, bro.
Well, he did, he never did the entire tournament and he owned me. That's why I'm just telling you, this guy kicked my ass.
When he calls this, he has a made hand though, like he's not gonna, even if he knows you're up to shenanigans, he's not gonna just call with there, but you could just keep barreling.
Right, because I can, you know, he's second in chips in this tournament right now and I'm, you know, so I was just trying to put pressure on him.
I, I think, uh, he owns you because you keep barreling into him when you're out of position and it's up. Every chance you had to bet into him when you were out of position and it's up, you did it.
You know what's funny? The dynamic changes at the final table. I get position on him, so it helps, but.
That was very fortunate. Yeah, he's just gonna show you, uh, yeah, you just gotta.
Yeah.
That hand is a disaster. ICM disaster.
Yeah, I agree.
So after that, I would be adjusting my range very tight versus this guy.
Yeah, I did. I agree.
For what it's worth, he was probably the worst player at the table.
Yeah, I think so too.
He stuck thirty grand playing, uh, mid stakes.
Yep, I, I remember, I, I shark, I. I shark scoped it too.
Man.
Limping is good here.
I would, I would be limping this versus this guy now.
I would be betting this.
Yeah, I like one big blind here.
Wait, what happened?
Uh, I folded, I stabbed and then I folded.
He, he bet huge on the turn.
Didn't we hit a queen?
No, 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 no. That was a good one there. Yeah, that was a good one.
Um, I kind of like attacking this, I think. I don't know if we want to use suited combos more.
Chippy V three bad, but that ICM is no go, right?
Just fold. I would think you would probably use the suited combos to attack, like, this would be the equivalent of like an ace five off frequency, like you're not gonna do it a ton, I don't think.
Is it the defen?
Uh, I would, I don't know, man. Do you not defend this? I think you're kind of deep. I would probably defend this. Am I crazy? Am I, am I messing this up? I might be.
We just.
Well, I'm, I'm messing it up if you're defending, I'm defending that to a button raise at this stack depth.
Another, always, too, but yeah, you don't want to battle the, another big stack. You, you don't have to get in here and play out of position with a shitty hand like this versus a good player.
Yeah, maybe you're right.
Big stacks.
Oh, look, look at small blind. The legendary penis wrinkle has entered the area.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Have you seen his, he's crazy.
He is, he is, he is crazy. He is very crazy.
Well, you know, I, I had notes on him back when he had like, uh, he was up like a hundred some thousand dollars on the site. And now he's almost even.
Yeah, he's wild.
Yeah.
Stop, stop cheating is somebody also. This is, um, she's a streamer.
Yeah, that's what his name's girlfriend, right?
Fantastic Fallon.
Yeah, that's it. Fantastic Fallon, that's right.
She's been doing great on BetOnline and some live tournaments, so.
Mm-hmm, yeah, uh, she's, she's a reasonably good player. She's got a good coaching, I know.
Yeah, that flop bet is not good at all. What are you trying to accomplish here?
Oh, I was looking at something else.
I would play check here too. He, he C bet this flop. It's just super coordinated. I would be, you're gonna get check raised. So I will say this, like, if you're gonna bet this flop, I think your sizing is better. I would probably go smaller than pot though, I think.
Well, I just watched Matt's, I just watched Matt's webinar, uh, uh, yesterday. Or that, before I played this and he was talking about betting big on these type of flops.
Well, it is a big bet flop. It's just this hand benefits a lot from a check.
Yeah, I agree.
Also, I think in that when you start getting heavy ICM spots, the bet sizes generally go down a little bit, just because. They are just as effective.
Yep.
So like a pot sized bet might be a half pot bet or something at that point, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Here's another way to think about that. So you're making a polarized bet on that flop and you tell me, tell me exactly how this hand fits into a polarized range.
As a check.
Yeah.
Yeah, it just, you, you kind of want to like, um.
Yeah, I agree. That was a mistake.
Yeah, if you're gonna, it seems like if you're gonna bet it, it's, it's a small bet.
Yeah, and, uh, eventually.
I think it's, I should have just checked. I agree.
First that guy too, he's crazy. Like, what do he let like pot on the turners?
Yeah, yeah, he is crazy.
Uh, okay, raise is good. Call. Easy life.
Yeah.
That was a big one. That was a big one there.
So this is probably okay to attack this guy. I would probably go smaller though, right?
Yeah, I got like five bigs.
I think this is fine, probably fine.
Okay.
It's just, you probably want to go smaller is the only thing I would think.
Yeah, I agree.
Uh, I would just check here.
I think this part of the deck is going polar. We need to raise.
Yeah, maybe.
Yep.
The twenty-five. Oh, those, those are Chippy V, not ICM.
I would just say like, me personally, this, this guy's kind of like, uh, he, honestly, this guy's crazy if you haven't played with him before and, um.
He is crazy.
I'm just going to play, I'm gonna play like manage the pot versus this guy particularly.
I see it's too good. You wanna go, it's the worst.
It does like sevens a lot. It's just like, this is one of the worst sevens.
Chippy V, it was a thirty, thirty percent raise.
That's correct, yeah. That raise is good. Um, I would defend here. I would overfold there. Raising here is probably good, um.
No checking.
Ace high, you're probably supposed to bet, yeah.
Yep.
Very small, I would think.
I don't know, it's fun to check.
Uh, yeah. So like.
I'm checking turn.
So like, look at this guy's range, for instance, like he is adjusting. Um, you raise as the chip leader, he calls ace queen.
Right.
So like, that, it's definitely worth noting.
Yeah, I got the message there.
You didn't get the message on this hand.
Well, that might have been a fuck you right there.
You're a beast.
I get, I get some of those too, Kelly. I hear you, man.
I play a little bit with emotion too, Ken, you know? I'm an emotional player.
So we don't think this is maybe, uh, I don't, I honestly, I think this is not bad, Louis.
Actually, actually, this turns out to be very bad.
Also, like, okay, if we, if we've got our theory hats on, like, he should be attacking you with like some eight, some weak ace X. And this is actually a pretty good combo to attack some of those, like.
I thought so at the time.
Yeah, but problem is we're suited. I'm gonna realize with this type of event, I would just call here. But tell you what, I like calling. I think it's safer. Chippy V, it likes to call, right? And then if we add ICM, these suited games are extremely popular to bluff with.
Yeah, yeah, they're, they're powerful, right? They, they target, they're pretty good at targeting his weak ace X, but you know.
Ken, can you look at the machine?
I'm running it, I'm running it, I'm running it.
I thought this was a good combination to do this with at the time. And also I have to say, I was, I was wanting to
annoyed.
Had a little revenge, uh, shit in my, I was ready to, this guy owned me, you know?
The, the one thing I will say is, I, I didn't, I do not have strong convictions about blind versus blind with this situation, like, I know that combos like this will forfeit attack from like the fields. Like, let's say you're like in the hijack and maybe like the button three bets you, like, it may attack with like a four bet with this because you cover him and you can apply a lot of pressure, but I don't know about this. I mean, maybe, right?
Yeah, it feels bad.
It does kind of feel bad, right? Like you may be, you may be much better served to play call here.
Let's see what Ken says.
I'll get the bet sizes right.
On wizard with the, uh, two tables ICM, it's a lot, all, most of the suited stuff is just calling here. It, it mixes, it has, um, like some of your ace two through ace seven off, three betting here.
Is it attacking with any kings?
Uh, there is a low frequency of king four, king five, king six, very, very low frequency with king four, king seven, taking nine off.
Is it seven, is, is seven too high a card? Is it like, uh, it's got, you know what I'm saying? Not, it's not blocking his folding range or is, is that the reason or?
I, I just think it, like, you have to know what his, his raise versus limp range looks like. It's just attacking like the floor of that. So is it pulling from the suited branch or the offsuit branch?
It's pulling from the offsuit branch for the three, okay, or for the raise, yeah.
Okay. Man, it is cold.
Not there.
Big baby.
I am a big baby, man. I, I hadn't seen, hadn't seen snow in a couple of years. Give me a break.
You don't know I call it sixteen below here.
That's cold.
Hey, I'm in Texas. It's thirteen degrees right now. We're freezing. We ain't used to this.
Hey, I'm gonna tell you something. Yesterday it was minus three degrees here in Denver and the, and the snow was melting off my car.
Hey, since when you guys are working in degrees now?
Uh, it's always been that, it's always been that way.
Really?
Get with the program. Celsius nerd.
I don't know what a mile is either. Jeez.
Well, let me ask you. You guys are all math, you guys are all math guys. What does that convert into, Kelv?
Uh, it's like plus thirty-two or something. I forget what that conversion is.
My first name is Kelvin, by the way, I'm just.
Right. I'm more of a ranking guy, myself.
Do we have a solution?
Uh, I gotta, I was setting it up still, um.
Well, the solution is I get screwed in this hand, so.
Man, you must have been steaming at this guy. He's gotten the best of you literally.
Oh, he owned me. He owned my ass.
It's always the same thing, Kelly. You keep pouring chips out of position, it's up.
Yeah. This is, this, this situation is why like aggressive Brazilians make money late in tournaments. Cause they keep poking and poking and poking.
Well, I wasn't, I wasn't on tilt. I was thinking that this was a good combination to, to try this. But, uh, this was not the spot to try it, obviously, and.
King six off, ace six off, ace five off, king five off. These are the hands.
Gotcha. So, yeah. And it's jamming a whole bunch.
Do we have a? Actually, we do, like, look at aces clicking, kings clicking, and then king five off, ace five off.
Right.
Yeah, it's the right hand. Just the offsuit, king seven off is in there.
Yeah, king seven off, okay.
Yeah, it's not too crazy, but I mean, this, this range looks pretty wild, right? Like, we would have to adjust some of this stuff to get like a.
It doesn't feel wild to me at all.
What, you think that, that jack six through jack deuce is really strong to you?
Jack six to jack deuce is folding.
If you look at the suited, if you look at the suited side.
We're suited. I mean, what are you gonna do?
No, 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 I don't think you understand. I'm saying it's telling you to jam jack six suited, jack five suited.
You're misinterpreting the colors. These are folds.
Then what is, what does it say raise?
Not in range.
Zero.
It's a different color.
Am I crazy here?
There's zero raises all in.
And what?
It's raising one percent of the time.
Different shade, it's.
Oh, do you have it like squared proportional or something, don't you? Like where it's like showing everything?
No, it's not. We see the, the levels.
I don't know what, I don't know what I'm looking at here.
It's calling.
Okay, this, this makes a, this makes a little more sense to me. Okay.
You can raise it some call.
So you see the square where it left from, ace seven to like king four.
Right, yeah, so it's just, I was wrong in thinking the suited combos. It's pulling from the offsuit as a bluff.
Alright.
He wasn't buying what you were selling, Kelly.
Well, you know, in a way though, he mu, he might have had aces or something like that. If I flop some fricking king or something, I might go broke there.
Let me step back a second. Now, a few hands before this, you opened king three off and bet two streets and then I went to the showdown on the river and what did he show you?
Well, we don't know.
Ace queen. It was ace queen.
No, 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 that wasn't the right hand.
Well, that was a blind versus blind where he just.
No, ace queen, no, I was button versus, no, no, that was the wrong hand, uh.
Yeah, Kelly's right. It was button.
I had the button, I had the button on that hand. It wasn't king three. King three was blind versus blind. He never showed that hand.
Yeah, and the river, the king three in the river, he shot and Kelly fought.
Yeah.
I think.
Point I was trying to make was he has a very strong calling range.
Yeah, I agree. I agree.
So he's not getting out of line, right?
Yeah, I agree. I, I will tell you, that was an emotional pre-bet.
This one?
No, no, the other one. No, not this one. Not this one. No, the king seven, I was saying.
This might just jam.
Follow all of them.
That's a, that's Chippy V, right? I would, I would guarantee this is probably fine.
I think ace deuce to ace five is probably jamming here.
Yeah, and ICM, I think they jam too.
Jamming? Maybe, maybe.
You get ace five, ace six, ace seven, ace eight before.
It's twenty-seven effective, though.
Get all the better aces to fold. If the ace come, it's clean.
So it didn't like whatever you did. Did he open two X?
Feels punty.
Yeah.
So are we still two tables left? Or is this final table?
Yeah, two tables.
Two tables.
All right, so there's nine players left. I'll run it real quick. It's running, as we speak.
So maybe this.
What position did he open?
Actually, I think there was eleven players left. Actually, there was, they, uh, for a while, the other table was stolen, so there was like, it was seven and five, so there was probably twelve players left in this and then it.
Uh, I'm looking at a competitively similar, um, final table simulation and I mean, it's definitely doing stuff with this hand class. It seems to want to like, now, take it with a grain of salt because this isn't exactly what we're looking at, but it seems to want to jam with the suited combos. And it seems to want to not all in raise with the offsuit ones. And I would guess it's because when you get called with the suited ones, you have the extra equity as opposed to the offsuit ones, which is just kind of like a stabby bluff.
It would, it would be a good three bet small here.
Give me the screen.
Um.
Yeah, I would say I, I would say I raised too much there. I should have just raised like six, but I, but, uh, but I like, I like the ace deuce off raise there.
So this is, this is similar what I'm seeing, Ken, right? So you're seeing like competitive frequencies of not all incising from the offsuit. But the jams are coming purely from the suited ones. And I think it's that extra bit of equity you want when you're called. And like, I mean, that's, that's pretty global.
Doing it more often.
No, you're, you're reading it wrong. The ace three offsuit is, is jamming, almost, is jamming.
Scotty, look at, look at the range, like what it's doing with all the offsuit. So like, you see trace frequencies through all of the offsuit combos of not all incisings.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
From the suited side. You don't see it from the suited side. So if you're going to construct your range, the offsuit is leaning towards these not all incisings. Yeah, you're, it's.
And the suited is only all in or all in or call. Yes, that's, that's what I'm trying to say.
You can see how much more the suited makes. It's thirty-eight sixty jam in there and this is half of that, less than half.
Right, so you could jam the, these combos. It's just like.
The absolute wheels.
Globally, it's gonna be a more like competitive option for like not all incisings. If you're looking for a heuristic to apply.
Yeah, yeah.
You're gonna remember, if you remember.
There wasn't, there was no standard raise on the suited side from anything it looked like.
No.
So like, if you think you're supposed to jam your bottom pairs there, you match them with your suited aces. So if you're jamming two, three, four, you can jam ace two, ace three.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That's, that's a good way to think about it. If you're jamming aces there, it's probably better to jam it. I, this is just as a let go.
Kelly, Kelly, can you do me a favor?
Yeah.
Take one thousand dollar out of your seven K winning and get yourself free flop academy. I'm serious, because you make these defense over and over and over again. You think like, this is like barely a Chippy V defense, right?
Well, it, it's.
A lot of money.
I'm gonna, I'm going to, uh, I'm gonna, I have an excuse. Uh, you know, I made one final table last six months, so I haven't had a lot of practice at final tables.
You haven't been in our study sessions hardly ever.
No, I can't get, I can't get up this early.
We study ICM a ton.
I was gonna say, that's fair, Kelly, you know.
It's on the video. You can watch the videos, like I, we have inventory on Wednesday. I'm gonna be here Monday and I might be here Friday. But then it's like, I'm not gonna be here Wednesday, so watch the video and you'd be like.
I do watch, I do watch some of the videos, actually. I'm just, I was just joking, but.
They're good, though. But yeah, oh my gosh, like, so tempting. You lose a lot of chips just defending the big line.
Kelly.
I like it, given that we defended, but maybe not.
If we played it, we might as well play it, right?
You're seriously, like ten minutes ago, you had seventy big blinds. You didn't need to do any of the things you did. None of that was necessary. You could have sat on your big blinds and it would have been like, good.
So my only question is, Louis, okay, we've all acknowledged that this should be a fold pre, but now that we're here, if you're going to extract some EV from this combo, I feel like this is.
This is all God's big told, as played.
As played. As played.
Given a, then I like.
Yeah.
Look at this, Kelly. Very, very effective raise here on the shot.
If you're going to call here, Kelly, I like this play a lot, but.
This is it. You have a spade, so I liked it, but I thought you would want the upper dangler, but this one will make the straight, so.
We block three, five, we block four, five, like, we, we got some.
It's also super dry.
Yeah.
So you get away with the undercards.
So yeah, that's a very nice one.
Louis, you want to do with the four.
One in a row.
Yeah, I really like this play, Kelly. Nice one. Number sixty-four.
It's one for the books.
Louis, you weren't sure about doing that with the four-three? Are you sure? But you would do it with the four-six, right?
Definitely. At the upper dangler, you're just always doing it.
Oh, yeah, when you can make second pair there, um, it's definitely gonna be good.
I'm scared to press forward now, Kelly.
What do you want to do, Louis, first off?
I want to call.
I want to raise.
I am tempted to raise this.
I'm jamming.
This particular player, I'm raising.
So jamming, I think jamming's a punt. Just because like, look at our chips, like this, this is final two tables, like.
No one wants to call here.
I, no, 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 I, I, I think.
Very.
I think this, is this final table? We just went from five players to seven. I think this is final table now.
This is final table. This is final table. See the guy on my right? I got, I got position on him.
And, oh, then absolutely not three betting this.
Is there seven ray people at this table? Let me.
Alright, so I like calling here because I'm scared. I've been hurt with ace queen.
Oh dude, there, there's a sixteen, a sixteen and a twenty, like you should be in the box here, like very snug.
Oh, I see a queen here. I'm, I'm, I'm like, oh my goodness. I remember all the pain.
I see.
All of it.
This is a very high frequency call.
I just want to call. That's what you do. Oh my god, Kelly.
Kelly, what are you doing if he jams? What are you doing if he jams?
You can go smaller.
Exactly, Kelly, what are you doing there to jam?
Yeah, it should have gone smaller. I agree with that.
Seven.
I'm probably folding if he jams, honestly.
Then.
If you're gonna raise fold, definitely go smaller.
I think this is my bluff. This is a bluff.
Honestly, no, if you're raised folding, this is like punting. This is horrible if you're raised folding.
Can we see the machine, Ken? I would like the machine for it.
I'm running it. I'm, it's already going, so let it go. You can discuss.
I have a question while, while you're running it. So if at Chippy V, this is a fine raise, right?
You could jam this at Chippy V probably.
And at ICM, this is a disaster because we're getting involved with a thirty-six when we're at twenty-two and it's a sixteen, right?
Well, you got, I got three short stacks behind. I've got three stacks shorter than me. That's one of the biggest problems here.
Hey, to give you an idea, okay, I'm looking at a, a table arrangement where it's like we're middle versus middle and there's some shorter stacks at the table. It's got eight combos in the entire range that jams, um, and only a hundred. And only a hundred and ten that raise. And Ace Queen, um, Ace Queen is a majority call with a very minor frequency jam.
Okay.
But.
But it, but we're never folding it to ICM. We're just not raising it.
No.
It's one of the most popular calls. It's just one of the, it's one of the most popular calls because of how in the box you're gonna be if he, if he decides to continue.
Right. Okay.
Like you, you just don't really raise here.
Definitely. I'm scared when I see that.
And if we were one, and if we were a small, and if we were the small stack, we would definitely be jamming it.
You could just jam if you're like sixteen. If you like penis wrinkle or GGGGG unit, just jam.
Just jam it. And if we were, and if we were the big stack, we would raise it to put pressure on him with the short stacks, but not.
I think, I think that's correct, Scotty.
Okay, okay.
But we, we have to be respectful here. And this, this was not respectful.
No, and, uh, I, I didn't have any respect for anybody at this final table because I was gonna either win or, or go out quick.
I hear you, man. I.
I had enough of this bullshit that I've been going through and, uh, I was going for the, I was going for it. I didn't care about ICM or nothing in this tournament.
I hear you, man. You needed to win.
I wasn't playing ICM anymore. This guy, and this guy made a mistake thinking I was ICM aware.
You might have, uh, you might have earned a couple tags this tournament. Who knows?
I probably did.
See, look, okay, look right here, Kelly. This is, this is ICM adjusted. Right here, calling here. This is probably strong enough to even three bet some, but I, I don't hate a call here. What do you think, Louis?
I love the call. I don't see anything else we could do. Three bet here. I think I like three bets as well. I prefer this three bet a lot more than the Ice Queen.
It's strong enough to call.
Well, remember this guy's, yeah. Remember this guy's range, right?
So.
You have this guy, uh, th- this is the same guy that, that you were barreling out of position before, right?
Yeah, he's like, he's owning, he's owning my ass, man.
Right. Maybe there's some, uh, maybe there's a couple mind games going on there too then.
The forwards work. An HR three with seven left, the most profitable play with Ace Queen off is a jam.
With how many left?
Seven left.
With, with that, with that.
The setup, the setup, this payout, exactly. It, it did all three, but it jammed. The least, uh, favorable thing was call.
I, I really thought it was never gonna raise on.
Yeah, don't raise there.
So here, when you're in position, you don't almost have no raise with this type of end.
I'm, I'm glad we've come, I'm glad we've come full circle on that because there was an iteration of the study group where it was like always raising here and it drove me nuts.
Yeah.
This is, this is clearly.
No, because it's because of the scenario. We in position don't get to raise very much. It's just.
You don't need to. You just don't need to, especially versus that guy.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we let him off the hook.
Uh, this is probably okay. Um, deep waters, I'm just gonna check.
I beat him a hand. I beat him a couple of hands.
This is a fold, I think.
My goodness. Like you're, you're, it's costing you a lot of big blinds. And then it's ICM big blinds. So there, it's. I don't know, how come, uh, how come you like, you're not aware of that? That's a pretty big lead, Kelly. Is, is there anyone reviewing your game right now?
Us. Well, you have to go to a final table to have ICM. That's what I was saying. I haven't been at a final table for fricking six months. I'm not kidding.
As soon as you get close to pay, uh, to ITM, you know.
I'm probably doing a lot of this in, uh, in, you know, the final two tables, final three tables like that's been costing me for sure. But I haven't been playing much the last two or three months either.
Yeah, yeah, you've been moving.
Yeah.
Um, I don't know if I like this little click size versus him. Like two point five pre-flop.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's never folding there and.
I would, I think maybe.
I would never raise.
I think you're probably supposed to raise almost any two cards here.
I think, my thinking, my thinking was Matt told me in a lesson a, a long time ago that when you are the, when you have the high, bigger stack at the final table, you never, you never, you raise every time, a hundred percent hands.
You, you should be, honestly, this should be pretty close to a hundred percent RFI, I think. I would just raise bigger.
I would bet that turn bigger.
Nice.
Like you bet small, fine, then you bet closer to partner.
Well, look at his stack size though.
Yeah, it's true. He can't really jam. Like, I mean, if he jams, he's just lighting money on fire, I think. This is probably fine. Yeah, good.
Happy days.
Uh, probably good. This is probably good. I might go a little smaller, I think.
Now, I'm chip leader.
I would never do that here.
I would just fold.
So it seems like it's too bold to me.
I'm chip leader. I'm gonna apply pressure right here.
Why do you apply, but, oh, I'm sorry. You were saying.
I'm gonna look and see if I can find it. Okay, this is a good one. This is a situation where it shows us having eighty big blinds. And then fifty big blinds under the gun opens. So.
Well, it's, he's low jack now. He's not under the gun. He's low jack.
I'm just finding something that works.
Yeah, we only have six players.
I'm looking at, I'm looking at six max.
Okay, okay.
It is pulling, it's not really pulling much from the offsuit branch when you're super, super deep. It wants to pull from the suited branch. But like, if this was suited, it would be doing it quite.
Exactly. It's not, not good.
It's just a little deep.
Okay.
So Kelly, here's how I'm thinking about this hand. Um, yeah, so he's, he's second your, your most, so you can put a lot of pressure on him. Absolutely.
Yep.
And the time that you wanna put that pressure on him is either when you have the real hand or when he opens in later position. So he's wider. He's, that's the tightest he's ever gonna be. I agree, it's not under the gun, but it is low jack. And it is, you're, you're attacking his tightest range there. Why bother?
Be a good three bet? This one on Chippy V, button, big blinds, a high frequency three bet bluff. If we look at chip arrangement, he's really short. You can put him in the pickle. He opens from button. He should be very wide.
I mean, what do we have? Five left?
It's either like a fold or a three bet for me.
See if I can find something comparable. So I got a forty and a sixty.
I'm three bet, I'm three betting here.
Uh, a forty and a sixty. This one's actually pretty good. There's a really short stack, a really short stack and a forty and a sixty. So big blind, what are we looking at? Button? Yeah, it's pulling from this area. Um, it doesn't like King six specifically, but all of these offsuit King X are very popular.
I like it.
Uh, Kelly, uh, you, you are aware of, uh, the short scope stat of the people at the, at this?
Yes, everybody, yep.
Okay. And Shane, and Shane was, uh, was good, right?
Right.
Okay, so he opened anyway, and he know you are going to be, uh, to be a loser versus him. So.
You're saying he's pre-adjusted. You're saying he's pre-adjusted for the ICM considerations? Is that what you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
This is an easy fold, Kelly.
I think this is probably a fold. Uh, do we attack that guy ever though? I don't know.
That looked like a combination I could three bet to me. Especially since I'm the chip leader.
So it shifts a little bit, right? Like when you're in the small blind, it starts pulling from the suited a little bit more than when the big blind, you're pulling from the offsuit.
Okay.
Seems like it would have been good if it was suited though, like.
I think if we see that here, we size up. No, is this not a board where we are gonna size up too broadway? In position, kind of deep against a big blind. This is a spot where we size up. If we size up, it'd be a better king to fold.
What are you wanting to size up to?
Three and a half.
I think that's good. I, 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 smaller three and I, I like it better than a one big blind bet, I think. He's just gonna have a lot of this. Yeah. I, I'm kinda with that. Three and a half seems good.
Say we were at Chippy V on the flop.
It likes small, but it's, it's got mixed frequencies of big bets.
Mostly a bigger bet. Oh no, oh no. Okay, some frequencies, some frequencies.
Yeah, it's got competitive frequencies of a larger bet. So it's.
Yeah.
Um.
That's a good one.
This is, I was gonna say, this is probably pretty good.
That's a very good one.
You should be able to apply, uh, yeah. I think this is good. Uh, that's good. Probably, okay, I don't, I see, man, I.
They don't have a lot of ICM pressure.
I'm not doing that.
So I was gonna say, like, part of me wants to let these guys just play it out. I don't really need to fight for their chips. I think you're gonna have a more profitable arrangement, three betting and stealing from the middle stacks.
I would not. I would not do.
Like, I would like three betting Ace seven, like you were, or King seven, like you were doing, much more than this.
Oh, he got scammed.
He did get scammed. And, okay.
Go back to that hand. Go back to that hand.
Which, which hand?
The hand, the Queen eight. I'm the button. I'm looking at thirteen big blinds, eight big blinds. Okay, so you don't like this jam?
No, because if you fold here, this guy's jamming like fifty percent of the time.
I guess, I guess what we're saying here, what I'm trying to say is you have very little to gain by V pipping here while they have very much to gain by V pipping here.
This is gonna explode. Like this guy's gonna call some range because he's getting short. And this guy should put on the, the, the pedal to the metal like it's him.
Yes. And the other part about that is, these other guys, as these two short stacks get shorter, you can exploit the other two even more with your three bets cuz they have to fold more and more and.
Right, I need to go after the two thirty, the, the middle stacks.
Also, like the reason why you don't min raise, that you don't wanna get shoved on and then fold. So you, you leverage yourself, but then you know that there's an explosive situation. That you don't really need to do that.
Their, their collision factor is very high. Like these two guys, one of them, one of them is going broke soon. Like right here, those twenty big blinds mean immensely more to him than they do to you at this point.
Yeah, I was thinking about risk premiums there and I was thinking that I had a, they, I had zero risk premium and they got quite a bit. That's.
No, no. So Kelly, go, go, go back to that. There's, there's something with, on the risk premiums. The people who have high risk premiums against you are Shane and she.
Correct, correct. I, I get that. I know that.
Yeah, the short.
I'm just saying the small blind, I was.
The small blind has a, has a.
My queen, my queen eight beats the, the big blinds random two cards. This, like, if I was in the small blind versus the big blind, I'm shoving Queen eight all day with, against nine big blinds.
Sure.
Okay, so, so the big, the, the small blind has no incentive to call my shove because of the short stack on his left. That's what I'm thinking. When I'm shoving the Queen eight.
Okay.
Yeah, but the big blind is a short stack.
Right, that's, you're missing my point. That's not what I said. I'm saying, I'm not worried about the thirteen point five eight. I'm not worried about Blue Beagle because he, he has an incentive to fold. And the other guy's got eight, or I'm, has got, well, it's basically nine big, eight big blinds, right? So if I was, let's just say I was in the small blind, instead I'm shoving Queen eight against that eight stack, that eight big blind stack all day. So I don't care.
I think you are right. It's a.
That's why I'm shoving Queen eight.
Yeah, it's a shove, uh, one hundred percent.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, get with Matt and I'm gonna ask him about this particular hand because.
Should, you should. Uh, you're jamming into a guy who has basically no risk premium and a guy who has very little risk premium.
Yeah, personally, I'm not doing that kinda shenanigan.
Well, I, I, I guess, I guess that's not true. I think Blue Beagle's got quite, quite a bit of risk premium.
Why, why does he have a big risk premium?
Because he doesn't wanna go out before the short stack on his left.
Okay.
He moves up a level.
So say you fold, Kelly. Say you fold.
That's why I said he has little.
Let's explore the scenario where you fold. What kind of range you think he open jams?
Wait, you open jams?
If you were here, sixteen, you'd be jamming like sixty percent of hands, maybe?
Yeah, I, I was, I agree.
So this guy's a timing bomb, right? He's gonna, it's about to jam sixty percent of answer.
What I can tell you is like, do you think that guy's folding Ace Jack offsuit versus your jam? Do you think he's folding like Ace ten suited?
Which, which guy? Oh, no. No, I don't think so.
So like, how much tighter do you think a Chippy V calling range he has? A pip, pip and a half?
I think more than that.
Okay, I mean, so what's the floor of a calling range then?
Well, he's not calling with Jack, he's not calling with Queen Jack, is he?
Probably not.
Okay, he's not calling Queen ten. So there's tons of hands. There's ton, all the queens. You know, there's a couple queen hands that I could get him to fold.
I mean, those are pretty, I think those are pretty marginal versus jam and Chippy V. Like calling Queen, Queen ten versus fourteen, or fourteen big blind jam with Queen ten? I think it's pretty, pretty close.
You think he's folding a pair of fives? Probably. I think he's folding a pair of fives. I think he's folding all of his small pairs. I don't think he wants to get in a race with me. I mean, there's, there's quite a bit of hands he's folding, I think.
So.
I think he's folding his Ace Xs. It's a lot of small Ace Xs there.
I can tell you, he has a pretty small risk premium comparatively. There is some, but it, it's like, let's see.
Well, Chippy V, he calls Ace five, King Jack, Ace deuce suited and pocket threes. So which of those is he changing? Is he calling King Jack offsuit here?
Oh, I don't think he's calling King Jack ever there.
Okay.
In this spot.
Okay, so we knocked that one out. He's calling, okay. Um, what's his offsuit pieces that he's calling with?
I think, I think he's folding, I think he's folding Ace seven and below.
Okay, so that's three of those we got rid of. He's gonna call all the suited aces.
Yeah, I agree. Well, I don't know. I don't know. Are you calling Ace deuce suited there? Are you call, are you calling Ace deuce suited there?
Me? No, I, I'm folding everything.
Exactly, exactly. I, you know, this, I mean, this guy's a really good player. I mean, he knows, he knows what he's supposed to be calling, but this guy is a top player.
So I think you're just, uh, you're just introducing variance to the table. I don't think you're making, it's a big mistake one way or the other, but I, 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 this is.
I think it's style of play. I think there's some style of play here.
These, these aren't the guys you're making a lot of money from if you're trying to approach things from an ICM perspective.
Well, I'll tell you what, guys. I will sum it up for us. Galen and I, I think we're lean to board caution a little bit here. And then everyone else is just very clear, black and white type of scenario. That it's a jam. That's a good jam and it's fine. But I don't know about that. Maybe we should be cautious here.
I, I mean, I'm not gonna say it's a huge mistake. I'm just saying like, if you are trying to maximize your profits here, short stacks here are what you want and you can just three bet these other two middle stacks to death.
Yeah, that's true.
You can, you can bleed them, you can bleed them out by watching the short stacks bleed. And it's like preserve your chip stack kinda thing.
And there's one other thing on that. So the reason for doing it that's good, the one you said, which is that the, the arrangement means that Blue Beagle is in the box, although the big blind isn't, and that's great. The, the argument for going the other way is you're in the perfect position to do what Galen said. Because you've got, not only are the big stack and there are not only two small stacks there to, to increase the risk premium on the other two. You have position on the other two. You're exactly where you wanna be.
Yeah, I agree.
It's the war of attrition, you know, just bleed them out.
I would just give him a walk here. Is this a mistake?
Yeah, I don't think you ever give him a walk. I mean, I, I don't think Matt would say that. I think Matt would tell me it was a mistake and not raising with this hand. But I could be wrong.
Yeah, no.
I don't know, six tree off feels like it's so jung.
I think you raise a hundred percent of your range here.
It, it will be very high V. I don't think it's a hundred percent.
Now, he is.
Stack.
Yeah, now he's a short stack. I will agree with that. I think.
Right, so it's, you, you don't raise a hundred percent into the guy who has the least to lose.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, if you reverse Shane and Blue Beagle.
Yeah, if you flip them, I, I agree, yeah.
That is correct. Okay, he's gotten away with two of these.
Yeah, he has. But I was getting pretty, you know, I probably deserve, you know, I was getting out of line pretty bad though, so.
So he's telegraphed that he's definitely got some polar components to this.
Exactly, exactly. So I.
So you can probably start attacking that with like some Ace X blocker type things.
Right. Yeah, I, I, I was pretty, I was pretty sure he had my ass here. I wasn't gonna blow up that, that river.
I would, I would give a walk here. Is this a mistake?
Yeah, I, I don't, I, you know. I'm gonna find out because I'm gonna review this with Matt later, so.
Good. I'll be curious to hear what.
I'll see. I'll see what he says about these these situations. I would like to hear.
The one thing we can observe just as played is all most of the pushing around with a big stack that you've done has been has not worked out well.
At all.
Well, I disagree.
I mean, in all this.
Every time you went with a very weak range construction, it didn't work. This might be the only time it worked.
In the blind versus blind. Yeah, I agree with that.
No, no, in other spots.
Yeah, I mean, you got lucky with the Queen eight.
Yeah, I did.
With that.
Every time you do a weird range construction type of thing, you get in trouble.
I'm just saying these three guys don't seem to be paying that much attention to the I C M pressure that you're putting on them.
Yeah, they're good players. I mean, they know what they're going. They know it's.
So you three bet and you check?
Yep. I got a better ace I bet here. I want him to think I don't have an ace. I want him to come, you know.
Sure.
You guys agree with that?
On the specific hand or on the, you know, as a specific hand? Yeah, it's a fine way to play that. That it makes sense for the hand. Does it make sense for the range? I don't know. But for the ace five specifically, sure.
I think Steve is small.
You're 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 not afraid of any other cards. You're crushing everything.
What happens if I get check raised there? What happens if I get check raised there? What do you do then?
Call once and then fold on the turn.
Exactly. I don't want to get check raised there. Yeah.
That's what I mean is for this.
That's why I'm checking back.
Yeah.
All right. So do 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 do.
All right.
What do our computer overlords say here? I like that.
Ace of clubs. Ace of clubs here. Ace of clubs here. Ace of clubs is here.
We're getting a we have a flop, Louis. You can look at just the ones that have flops. Ignore everything that doesn't have a flop.
Uh, there's a bug. Doesn't doesn't show.
What are you trying to look at?
He wants to look at this hand.
This three bet spot. How often do you check?
Uh, I would check very high frequency here.
Will you?
Is he in position on us or are we out of position?
We're out of position. We're out of position.
We were in the big blind. We three bet from the big blind.
Like. Yeah, I I don't see a lot of benefit in betting and building a big pot at this point with this guy. Like, if he's got ace X, he's just ahead of us and he's not folding. If he's got like pocket jacks or something like that, you might get one street, which you can do on later streets like this.
Yeah. Why why bet? Why bet the turn? Why not? Why not? With that logic that you used, why not let it? Why not let him bluff to the river?
I mean, take take one or two streets. It's probably fine. Like, you don't have to bet the turn. I think I just would because when he checks back, he should be pretty capped and you can get value from like Kings and Queens and stuff.
You can get that value on the river, though.
Go for two streets.
Oh, okay.
Small, small or medium, small, medium. What do we do here? Do we three bet this guy? No, this is a call and you blasted it on the turn. This is probably good, right? It went check, check, flop.
Yeah.
Yeah, this one makes.
Yeah, probably good with the six with this type of one as well. We got it.
Yeah, we benefit from folds. We got equity on turn on.
His eye is gonna fold maybe.
Yeah.
Then we check and then he bets like kind of.
I think we I I think we can. Okay, so he checked on the flop, right? I don't know how much. I don't know how much Queen X he's checking. I would um.
I would say zero, but I would say maybe a better jack here.
He could have ace jack like you lose to ace jack here, but he's also got bluffs. Having diamonds isn't great, though.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking as well. Like, Kelly made the call, but I'm thinking, I mean, it's not good.
I don't.
I think a king is not good.
I don't know if I hate the call. I think I think I'm okay with the call.
I love.
Blocking King ten, King nine.
So I mean, look at.
Very bad blockers.
Just take we'll just take the M D F here, the M D F here. What do you? I mean, this is pretty high on my range, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But Kelly, you can defend every other jack when you don't have a diamond. You can defend every jack that doesn't block his bluff like King ten, for example. So like here, I think Jack seven is superior to Jack.
We're gonna be. We're gonna be like Jack ten here. Or we're gonna be the air ball. Jack ten or like an air ball.
I think I'm gonna win a lot of pots with this hand.
Probably.
You can even lean towards the the block bet too on the river instead of just checking the river, just gonna throw like a twenty five to thirty percent bet out there, maybe.
Maybe. That's not a horrible option, I think. Um, honestly, the bet's small.
I checked with the idea. I checked with the idea of calling and I was pretty. I was pretty sure this guy's gonna bet like a hundred percent of the time here.
Sure, sure, yeah. And you're in game, so you have that feeling more. Yeah, I mean, we're looking at the hands afterwards.
Right.
So.
I want to wants you to block that this river, actually.
Right, so whoever said block that's definitely good. We got second pair.
We block bets here. But if you check, it's up your call.
I don't think he ever has a queen here.
So he's double blocking the straight there. I mean, okay. I think it was a pretty good call. Dude, this guy is fearless. He has been three betting you pretty relentlessly. That's a big three bet. Uh, okay. And we just run into that that dance. Okay. Um, okay. Uh.
Hmm.
It's pretty spicy.
I would. I I wish I would have folded there, honestly.
It's pretty spicy. It's close.
I think I think that's a fold there.
Definitely. And again, it comes from your, I think it's a like you think you should raise any two card here on this moment.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
You're very, very firm on your belief, right?
Yep.
Maybe you should be.
That was drilled in. That was drilled into me in my lessons, so my lessons that I've taken.
Yeah, well, you have a junk range that.
Well, no, 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 Kelly, Kelly, there's honestly, it's a big part of the strategy. I think there's just some contextual situations that you may not be taking into consideration. That's.
Yeah, I agree. I would agree with that.
Like, um, it's definitely good in some scenarios. But um, when the guys, the guy's just waiting to double up through you jamming trash into.
I know. I know. Well, how long can he wait, though?
It's true. Like, okay, so for instance, I'm looking at a final three tables scenario here. Where it's it's forty and there's a twenty and you're jamming into ten. Like, you're you're actually folding thirty two percent of the range, calling forty one percent of the range. You just don't jam a lot into the shorty as the big stack.
What's going on here?
Well, well, this guy's this guy uh is now not in the game anymore.
Which one?
Uh, the thirty seven big blinds. He's gone. He's his internet. His internet disconnected.
Oh, yeah, you said that earlier.
His internet disconnected. That's the only reason I jammed there. That's the only reason I jammed there.
And good game.
And then this guy was disconnected, so you.
The whole thing. I never played heads up with him, right? It was a three thousand dollar Christmas present.
Man.
Blue Beagle. I finished third in the in the boss heat last night. I didn't get the uh I didn't get as lucky as you for somebody. I went out in third, too. I was like, oh.
You know, the way I look at it is if there's anybody that deserves a lot of good luck, it's me. That's.
Hey, you might as well.
That was the second time I heard about somebody getting heads up and then his opponent just disconnects and.
Yeah, I can't believe it. I I was just like going, wow, this is unbelievable, you know?
It doesn't. It doesn't happen very often, right?
I you know, the thing was that he did win two hands, though.
Wow.
Well, when he goes on at the end, at the end.
His last two. Or his last.
Did you took your entire uh tank bank to wait for you or?
No, no, I I have to say I was not a gentleman.
You you're men raising really fast, but.
That was a really nice one, Kelly. Thanks for coming out. Swing your hands.
Yeah. Yeah, well.
Thanks for watching, everybody.
So I'll try to I'll try to play a little better, so I'll finish eighth next time, okay?